Looks like she's.
Yes, Margaret Costello, Planning Board member. Sorry.
That's okay. Nancy?
Nancy Arsenal, Planning Board member. I'm sorry, my camera's not working, but I'm working on it.
Right. Deb?
Debbie Woods, Voting Associate, Planning Board.
All right. Michael?
Michael Slegel, Land Use Planner.
And Valerie?
Valerie Ortiz, Planning Director.
All right. And I am Lori Clark, current Chair of the Planning Board. Um, so.
Lori, do you want, do you want me to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
Exactly.
Okay. I move that we waive the reading of the public hearing notice.
Second.
All right. Any discussion about waiving the reading of the public hearing notice? If not, well, I'll take a roll call vote on waiving of the public, reading of the public hearing notice. So. Meg?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
An aye. Okay. Now, a little bit about procedure for the hearing and then we will jump in. Um, so we're going to have the planning staff. Oh, and I'm sorry. There you are. Allison, do you want to introduce yourself? Oh, hold on.
Hello. I'm one of the newer members. I'm a non-voting Planning Board member.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So, uh, the Planning Board staff will first give an overview of the proposed zoning. Changes. Um, and then at that point, I'm going to open it up to the public for comment and question. When I do that, I would ask everyone to raise their hand either virtually or using Zoom or just on camera like this. Um, and if you are not on camera, um, and you don't, can't figure out the Zoom, uh, raise your hand, you can call out as well, but, um, at which point I would ask everyone to wait until you're recognized. Because of the way that, um, Zoom is working for this public meeting, um, we'll have to unmute you. Um, and then once we do that, you will have one to two minutes to ask questions or make comments. I would ask that you address all of your comments and questions to the board overall and not to an individual person. Um, and then when you are called upon, please state your name and address to start. Um, let's see. And then, uh, I, I do, I, I will revisit the timing, um, at the hour mark. So after an hour, we can revisit with the Planning Board to see if, uh, we want to continue or, um, I'm sorry, keep the hearing going or continue it, um, to another night. And it really depends how far we are along and, and how much more it seems that there is, um, at that point. Um, other than that, I'd say we are recording this meeting, but if you, um, are recording it on your own, I'd ask that you not do that in secret and you please state upfront that you are doing so. Um, with that, are there any questions on process before we dive in? All right. I'm going to hand it over to Valerie.
All right. Um, just one moment while I share my screen. All right. Uh, well, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you all for coming out tonight. We're here to present the Planning Board's proposed zoning bylaw to allow multifamily housing in compliance with the state's MBTA Communities Act. So this is a required step ahead of the town meeting scheduled for October 27th. Um, the purpose of this bylaw, um, is to meet the minimum requirements in order to comply with the state's MBTA Communities Act while maximizing local benefits. So we'll walk through this more in detail tonight. But briefly, this is intended to provide additional housing options such as duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes, to protect open space in Stowe by locating the district over residential land, to capture economic development benefits by locating the district by Lower Village, which is our primary business district, and to avoid legal fees and penalties as the state has confirmed that our proposal meets their requirements. So I'll pass this off to Michael to describe the basic requirements for Stowe.
Great. Thank you, Valerie. Uh, so many towns and cities across Massachusetts are considered to be MBTA communities. Stowe is being one of them. And all of these towns and cities have to do a few basic things. So all of these towns and cities must adopt a multifamily housing zoning district that allows up to 15 units per acre. Um, this district is going to be as of right, so there's no special permit process. And the towns cannot, um, create any age restrictions and, or any other restrictions that prohibit occupancy. Uh, the district size is dependent on the different types of towns that there are. Stowe being a small town has a small requirement compared to others. This is a zoning change and it does not require any construction of housing. So similar to all other types of zoning, there's no building mandate required by this. Um, we've also heard that there's a little confusion about what is changing and this is only the zoning. And there are some, uh, permitting that will still remain in place. So all of our wetland protection zoning, the Wetland Protection Act, well, septic regulations, building and fire code, all of that is remaining sa- the same. The only thing that we're proposing is the changing of the different types of housing that could be built in Stowe. On the next slide, um, we've learned that compliance with this state law is required. It is mandatory. And this was tested out by the town of Milton, who did not originally comply. Uh, this went to the State Supreme Court and they determined that this law is constitutional and enforceable. Um, so the town has been working to address this change in our zoning that's required. If we don't do anything, you know, the town does risk some consequences, um, such as civil enforcement from the Attorney General, and there are more consequences being, uh, discussed on Beacon Hill at the moment. Um, one of the consequences that we are aware of is the loss of grant funding, um, eligibility. And we've highlighted some of the big grants that the town has received in the past few years. Um, and projects like this wouldn't be possible if the town is not compliant with the MBTA Communities Act. So taking this all into consideration, uh, the Planning Board took a step back and looked at Stowe's goals, which is on the next slide. Um, and we've seen throughout different planning processes that there's been calls for different types of housing in Stowe, diversifying what we allow, um, encouraging development in certain areas. So we've seen a kind of a call for multifamily housing since 2010, maybe even earlier. We didn't go that far back. Um, so we're trying to take all of these principles from these different plans to propose a compliance solution to not only meet the state's goals, but to meet our own local goals. On the next slide, um, we'll talk a little bit about the Planning Board's approach. As Valerie mentioned earlier, we're looking to meet the minimum requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. She mentioned some of the things like supporting businesses, locating housing near services and amenities. Putting, um, we also want to make sure that we don't disproportionately affect roads. So putting multifamily housing, if it does get built, near high-capacity roads, while maintaining open space and protecting some of that, those rural characteristics of Stowe. Uh, the Planning Board also wants to encourage incremental growth, so we don't see, um, hundreds of units pop up all at once. We see a few here and there throughout the years as the bylaw gets implemented, if it does. Um, and we just want to mention that the Planning Board is considering different, um, housing things in the future. So this is one step that the town could take to address some of our local housing needs, but it's not going to be the only one that the town will pursue in the future. On the next slide, we have just some of the community engagement work that we've done so far. Um, and some of this has originated all the way back in 2021 when this law became a law. Um, so this represents many of the big events that we've had throughout the past few months recently. And on top of that, the board has met with different people, attended different meetings of boards and committees, um, to try to spread awareness of what this is, gather new ideas and support. So I am going to pass it off to Valerie, who will talk a little bit more about the specifics of what the Planning Board is proposing.
Great. Um, so we know that we have to choose a location for the zoning district. Um, so we've done a lengthy search, really looking to do this in the most beneficial way possible. Um, so we started with a map of the whole town. Um, and on this map on the left, um, it's the land in white that can be counted toward our compliance. Um, and green is the land that we are unable to consider, which is information coming from the state. And there are other, um, types of considerations as well in blue and in gray. Um, so we know we have to have either one area of at least 10 acres or two areas of at least five acres. So over the last year, we've, um, sought feedback from residents, members of boards and committees, and reviewed other town plans to look at what areas of town are preferred to conserve and what areas are preferred for housing development. So we've incorporated state-defined excluded land and sensitive land. And the Planning Board has created location considerations based on feedback and existing plans, such as what Michael was referring to earlier. So we're really seeking the balance between the state's requirements and then maximizing benefits to Stowe. So again, we were looking at this full map of Stowe and from, um, our review and our analysis, we dug a little deeper into several different locations in Stowe. And so circled here in red are those areas that we investigated further. So these areas come from your suggestions, from reviewing town priorities, and from the mapping analyses. So you'll notice that some of these areas, um, do include land that's in the green or blue. These are simply areas that just kept coming up through your feedback. And so we wanted to take the time to look into them a little further. And I wanted to note too, that the Planning Board has created documents that analyze each of these areas. So we have one document that we can share that indicates rationale against using about 20 different locations and a separate document to indicate the rationale for the proposed location of East Lower Village. Um, so the output again is the location to the east of the Lower Village. So here, just to get you oriented a little bit, um, in red are the parcels that are within the proposed location. To the left is the Lower Village Cemetery. Even further left off-screen is the Shaw's Plaza and the, the Lower Village. To the east or to the right of the map is the line with the town of Maynard toward Erickson's. Um, this whole area is about 14 acres of land, though that includes, um, uh, wetlands and roadways. So once those are subtracted out, this is just over 12 acres of compliant land. Um, so this includes about seven parcels, three of which are only partly within the district. And it's all residentially zoned land and all of it is within a half a mile of Lower Village, which is generally considered to be a walkable distance. So we've tested this location with the community and this was rated number one in a community survey, um, a forum that we held in February and a survey that we provided to town boards and committees that are versed in land use. Um, we feel the proximity to Lower Village encourages economic growth. Uh, it provides access via great road to minimize traffic concerns. It encourages the smaller incremental growth versus a larger development coming in all at once. We know that it has proximity to recreation, pedestrian and cyclist facilities. It's near town forest, near the Aspet River Rail Trail. And it also avoids parcels with farms, um, historic and rural views and non-residential districts. And then further, we have confirmed that this location will meet the state's requirements. So what would this zoning article, or how would the zoning article shape future development? So thinking about what can be controlled via local choice and what cannot be controlled. Um, so items that, that we've received your input on are under the local choice. So we're allowing certain housing types through this bylaw, which includes only duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes, up to five units in one structure. So this does not allow any type of apartment complex. Um, we've also aligned some other dimensional requirements, um, to the typical residential district. So the building height is the same as it is in other areas of town, limited to 35 feet. The setbacks, the distance between your home and your property line are all the same, um, as with the current residential district. And then we, we've actually increased the open space component, um, from the typical, because we know that's important to the community. What can't be controlled is whether or not multifamily housing is built. That's up to the property owners. Um, the town will not be selecting developers or having any hand in constructing homes. So the town is not taking property. We're simply adding flexibility to the landowners. We also can't control the size of the district other than increasing it. Uh, we do have that minimum requirement. And then we also need to allow the zoning up to 15 housing units per acre. Even though we understand that with current, um, well and septic regulations, we'll likely see a density lower than this. And again, as, um, as Michael said, um, housing developed is subject to other types of restrictions and requirements, such as the Wetlands Protection Act, well and septic regs, and the building and fire codes. So what does it mean for the property owners within the proposed district? Well, again, the zoning does not require any housing to be built. This is simply, um, exercise in having zoning in place. So the property owners within the district don't need to make any changes to their property. So this just adds additional options if they desire to take action on them. So future housing is not needed to be constructed at that maximum density, at the 15 units an acre. It could be lower than that. It's really the owner's choice and what might be possible on the land. And again, housing density is also restricted by, um, by other constraints such as the well and septic requirements. So we did, um, you know, we wanted to highlight that what has changed about the bylaw and the location since the spring when we began to meet with the neighborhood. Um, so we did, um, shift around the location a little bit and we did work on, um, the bylaw to make sure that we're, um, producing the type of housing, if it is constructed, that, um, that the residents may be more supportive of. So we continued to look at alternative locations as they came up throughout this process. Um, we shrank the district a bit. It used to include four additional parcels. Um, we modified the bylaw to allow residents to add multifamily structures without making any changes to their existing home. We modified the bylaw to align the setbacks, um, to make sure that all the setback's the same as the typical residential zoning. We incentivized landscaped buffers, um, and maintaining existing landscaping to the extent that we're able to. The state has dictated much of what we're allowed to do. Um, so we've attempted to push this item as far as we feel we can, knowing how important it is to Stowe. Um, and then finally to allow the board to waive some elements of the bylaw if the development mitigates neighborhood concerns. So just in summary, um, to review the benefits of this proposal, you know, um, we understand that no matter where the district is located, there are going to be concerns from existing residents and abutters. Um, but we are mandated to create the district and we've tried to do this in a way that provides potential future benefits to the town. Um, so this enables incremental growth. Um, we're locating the district near our retail center to offer that future support to economic developments, encouraging a walkable village, um, locating the district near Lower Village to focus development in an existing population cluster, an existing neighborhood, to avoid future sprawl. And also to maintain our small amount of available commercial land to retain the existing tax diversity. So less than 5% of land in Stowe is available commercial land. So that's land that is zoned for business use, but does not already have housing on it. We're also, um, looking at minimizing the loss of open space and rural character, which residents time and again tell us they value the most about living in Stowe. And also keeping this focused along Great Road, Route 117, to minimize future traffic impacts. Um, Great Road is a principal arterial that's, um, designed and intended to serve through traffic. And then lastly, um, this proposal meets the town's requirements for the state law, so we would avoid legal fees and penalties. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Valerie. Um, from here, I'm going to open it up for public comment and question. So just a reminder again, if you could raise your hand, I'll call upon you. Uh, we will unmute you. If you could then state your name and address. And you'll have one to two minutes to ask questions or make comments. Please make those comments and questions to the board overall. Um, and we'll go from there. I do want to mention that I will, uh, attempt to call upon, um, different people first before I, uh, call on, repeat, um, people who would like to make more than one comment. Um, and so we will go from there. All right. Let's start with Rumel. Uh, hold on one second. Let we, let us unmute you. All right, Rumel, go ahead. Uh, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Rumel Mahmood. I live on 32 Peabody Drive in Harvard Acres. Thank you, Lori, and thank you for the Planning Board for hosting this meeting. I just want to point out a few things, um, some of which I included in the letter that I sent to you guys. I'll highlight some of those points here. But I just want to say that this pop, this, this law is very unpopular across the state. It's likely going to be voted down at the referendum in '26. They're going to easily get enough signatures. So the argument that incremental growth, um, you know, that people don't have to sell, you can't make that argument and also say this is going to benefit the business district. Cause you don't know if anybody's going to sell or how long it's going to take, however many decades it's going to take. Cause the preference is it'll be incremental and slow. So, you know, we keep talking about the rural character, but the, the biggest violations that I see from this selection is things that are stated in the Recreation Plan, um, and Conservation Plan. And the things that they highlight, which you guys have failed to acknowledge, are the scenic views in this district, the agricultural heritage. These are all things that are pointed out in this plan. The agricultural soils, there's a map in there that says there are agricultural soils on this land. Doesn't matter. Um, there's vernal pools in this, in this area. That's also highlighted in the plan. And there are endangered species in this plan, in this location, and a drumlin. So the last thing I'll say is we appreciate you guys having this meeting and I'm sure other people will speak up. We would like to ho- host a debate with you guys where each side gets equal amount of time to present their views. Because we only have a very limited amount of time to speak. And anything we say is going to be rebutted by you guys, but without us having a chance to re- to, for rebuttal. So at some point, at least a week or two before the actual vote, we'd like to host a public debate in a neutral territory where each side gets an equal amount of time, to be fair, where we can debate these ideas and debate what we think is, hasn't been the best process and hasn't been the best solution. That's it. I'll shut up.
Thank you, Rumel. Uh, let's go to, um, Brian. I'm, I'm sorry if I get this wrong. Imhausen? One second while we unmute you.
I'm unmuted on my end.
Okay, perfect.
All right. So hi, thanks for having me, Brian Imhausen. You got the name right. Nicely done. Uh, 9 Hastings Street. So, so I just had a few questions. Um, I understand this MBTA, uh, act is sort of related to transit. So I was sort of wondering how and why it was not selected in an area closest to our, uh, MBTA lines, like in South Acton area or along South Acton Road. Uh, why we selected 14 acres over the minimum of 10 if we can't in the future do anything but expand? Why start greater than the minimum? And, uh, why is the old Bose complex, whatever that area of town is called? Why is that not counted toward our requirement for the state, right? Why are we, why are we zoning more if we already have multifamily, et cetera, et cetera?
Okay, let's take, uh, one at a time. Um, Valerie, do you want to take a few of those?
Sure. Um, so I understand that the, that transit-oriented design is certainly, um, part of this law and the, the rationale of the state. Um, they're also looking at, um, walkability. Um, and so for Stowe, we're thinking about how do we capture that economic benefit, um, within Stowe and not give it all away to another town? Um, so looking at our long-term vision for Lower Village as a walkable village center, uh, we feel that this multifamily housing law really fits in quite nicely, um, with the town's vision of, of that. Um, and also we've taken, we have taken a look at the land around, um, uh, South Acton Road to understand more about, um, what is there. And we've kind of described that a little bit further in, in some of our other documents. But essentially, um, the land, a lot of the land there is not eligible for this initiative uh, because of the state definitions of excluded land. Um, and then there's, we looked at a, a portion of land that is, uh, you know, not state-excluded, um, but it's the location of a former dump. Um, so, so we have taken a look at some areas in, around there, but really thought about, um, you know, the results from commute, from surveys that we've received from the community not wanting to put in a new pocket of population elsewhere in Stowe and really looking at, um, creating more density where there already are homes. Um, so again, trying to preserve open space, capture the economic development, and allow some future walkability toward this vision of Lower Village.
And I would say, um, you can also take a look at the alternatives document where we have outlined, uh, each alternate property that we've considered and the reasoning behind. Um, next is really around the 14-acre question. Um, and you want to take that up, Valerie?
Sure. Um, I understand that one's a tough one to kind of, um, wrap our heads around too, because it's, it's not just a strict acreage requirement. The state has, um, a compliance model where they look at our specific parcels that we're zoning and really consider the setbacks, the frontage requirements, open space requirements. And they're doing this complicated calculation around our specific parcels um, and the wetlands within them, the right-of-way is within them, and really trying to understand what, what is feasible. So when we give them the shape of the district that looks like 14 acres, they kind of automatically subtract out a few things. That gives them around 12 acres, right? And then from there, they're still making sure that we're meeting their minimum requirements. And so we have actually talked with our consultants about taking out another parcel or shrinking it at all. And unfortunately, the result is that we would have to increase the density allowance if we were to shrink it closer to that 10 acre, 10-acre minimum. So in fact, we'd have to go, um, increase from the 15 units an acre to something more like 16, 17, 18. So it's hard to comprehend, but the shapes of the, that make up the district um, are, are essentially showing us the output of this model is that we cannot, uh, shrink it further without kind of tugging at some other lovers.
And instead a different way, it's not a straight 10-acre. If we zone 10-acre, it doesn't necessarily meet the state's requirements. So we've been working with consultants to make sure that whatever we're putting forward does meet those state requirements, which they have confirmed. Um, and the last part of the question is really around Masters Academy and the Bose property.
Um, so, so for that property, um, in fact, the, it does, the site does not meet the minimum area required for a district. Um, because so much of that land is within a district called the Water Resource Protection District, um, which requires a, a special permit process in order to protect the groundwater for existing and future residents. Um, and the state does not allow there to be a special permit process in conjunction with this law. Um, so we would essentially need to waive that, uh, process in order to locate housing there. And we are not comfortable, uh, waiving, uh, a law, a bylaw that's intended to protect groundwater uh, for existing or future residents.
All right. Uh, with that, I will go to the next person. Um, let's go to, it's, I believe it's Catherine, although on Rumel's video.
Sorry, just one moment.
You're in.
Thank you, Lori. Um, it's Catherine Michael, 19 Great Road. The Planning Board has dismissed the use of unoccupied open space and instead chose an occupied family homes for this 3A site. Chose an occupied family homes for this three A site. So I'm wondering, how can you in good conscience justify that? In addition, you have told us that we don't really have to sell to the developer. So then what's the point? It would appear. That there is some truth, both in established Stowe residents to the, and to this, both to established Stowe residents. And to the state. Your mission can't be accomplished unless homeowners are willing to leave their homes and I for one am not. So that is a mixed message for me. The second thing is, how much actual time have you spent considering the turmoil your decision causes? For families who are in the zone that you've targeted as the only site. That can be designated for three A housing. Because of your actions as trusted leaders in the town. It is very clear to me that you value open space. Over the rights of residents to remain undisturbed in their homes. And I'm wondering how you justify that decision.
I can, I'm gonna make a few comments, um. I think we are, our mission is to meet the minimum requirement of the state to create a zone. The benefits, potential future benefits that are talked about is if anything were to happen there. Those benefits could come, but our mission is to meet the minimum requirement. Of creating a zoning district required by the state. Um, again, if you uh, um, one of the criteria when you look at our alternatives document is that. Uh, we chose not to go after open parcels because that would bring in. Um, you know, over a hundred units potentially all at once, which would have a a big impact on Stowe. Whereas um here, very little could happen or slow uh change could happen over time. Um, and to us, that would essentially mitigate the impact on Stowe as a whole. And I think as Valerie mentioned in the presentation, we acknowledge. We don't have a magic answer. There is nowhere to put this where no. Abutters or property owners would be, would not, would not be upset. So we understand that there are going to be upset residents and um, believe me, that that has weighed in our discussions. But the fact is, no matter where we put this district, there will be upset abutters. Or property owners. And so again, we're looking at, how do we make? How do we achieve being compliant by state mandate, but yet minimize the overall impact to Stowe? Um, and I'll move on to the next person and that would be Brian Martinson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, actually, I'm gonna ask a question about the draft bylaw itself. Um, so I'm looking at section five point six point eight, site plan approval. And, and there are other sections in here about um. Uh, notices uh to the planning board that you may confer with other boards or other people. But there's nowhere in here where you pr- uh require the developer to provide notice. To residents that they're thinking of doing this. And I'm wondering if you could. Put something like that, a clause in there, so we're not surprised if somebody sells land and never hear about it. I'd request, respectfully request you put something in like that. There's also, I understand, no. Provision here for any kind of public hearing. You could have put a pers- uh provision in there where you suggest a meeting between uh abutters. Um, but you haven't, and I'd also request that you put in a clause that would require that as well. I don't think these things cost you very much, um, and they would mean a lot to people who. Well, me and everybody else who is in this district and surrounds this district. We don't want to be surprised again, like we were surprised by this. Could you consider doing that?
I guess, Valerie, do you want me to comment on what the state would allow?
Um, I, I think I'll just mention that that both of those are included in the bylaw. Um, so in, so when we refer to. Um, the planning board's rules and regulations for site plan approval, that does include the public hearing requirement. Um, and the notice to abutters within three hundred feet.
It doesn't say that in section five point six. When you have a section on site plan approval though.
So we, I understand, um, it's, there is a little, throughout the, all the zoning bylaws, there's a little bit of a hunt that that folks have to go on. Um, but it it is, um, the site plan approval, rules and regs are noted within. Section five, six, eight, two, under submission requirements. And that is a document that rec- that um has the planning board require the the public hearing and the notice to abutters.
I guess I'll take your word for it, thank you.
We're gonna go on to Laura Reiner. One, one second Laura, we gotta unmute you.
Uh, Laura Reiner, thirty-five Red Acre Road. I'm not in a butter, but I am not far away. Um, it it does sound as though we're trying to meet the letter of the law without really meeting the spirit of the law. And I think for the residents, that's reassuring uh up to a point, but I'm trying to understand the mechanics of it. Um. We are excluding large parcels of land that are undeveloped and are ripe for that. Um, the one I proposed some time ago, one of these hearings was. The golf course that's currently closed on White Pond Road, also very close to the Lower Village. Um, actually more walkable than the main street without a sidewalk and. Uh, not only is it not being used as a golf course. It's highly likely it's going to be sold to a developer for hundreds and hundreds of units of housing. So it's, it's. Seems to me an excellent cat uh candidate for a spot like this, um. But, but saying, setting that aside, since it sounds like you've kind of picked the spot. Is it true that the, an individual in that zone can sell to a. Person and it does not have to be developed as, it could just be sold as a normal house and.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and that person could then turn around and sell it to a developer who would then cram it full of these fifteen acre units to the acre, right?
They could certainly sell it to a developer, uh, whether or not they can really create fifteen units per acre would really depend on. Um, the other requirements regarding well septic, um, Wetland Protection Act, et cetera.
So this is gonna be incremental based on any individual who sells a parcel. Or sells their unit, their their land to someone who actually wants to build these. And to what extent does this build affordable housing as opposed to luxury townhouses?
It's the same as our current residential district, um. Which is if they uh, ref- refresh my memory Valerie, where do we land on the number of units?
It's um, so ten, ten percent of units can be deed restricted affordable.
Which is exactly the same as any other residential property.
Okay.
I can speak to the um.
Thank you.
The White Pond Road parcel too, if you'd like. So Laura is referring to the former Stowe Way. Um, golf course along, along White Pond Road, which which is close to Lower Village. Um, and it's, it's interesting, we, this parcel did come up, as you mentioned, in some of the early forums, um. Though it's also, you know, high priority parcel for conservation as well. Um, and we've, it's, it's funny, there's, we've also heard from so many residents that they. Would far prefer um conserving that piece of land rather than seeing housing developed along the river there. Um, so again, you know, the thought is if we were to zone it over Stowe Way, there's one single owner. Um, they could convert it to housing all at once, um, quite quickly. While Stowe is within this period of growth, right? We do have other subdivisions, other developments coming down the pike. Um, and we want the town to have, um, to have time to, um, uh, to adapt to that as well. Um, so this is on, on all sorts of town plans, it's, um. That parcel is seen as development not preferred from plans that are. Um, that have considered community input. Um, and it's also one of those high priority conservation parcels within the open space and rec plan. Um, I think I'd also say back to your, your other question about, um. What residents within the district can do, I do want to note that folks can stay within the district while taking advantage of it. So. Uh, we do allow the conversion to duplexes. Um, you could add another unit on your property that might be larger than accessory dwelling unit. Um, so there's, there is more flexibility there uh for folks while they stay.
And again, I just want to make one more plug for the alternatives document. Um, if if you are interested in seeing all the parcels that were reviewed and the reasoning behind there, I highly recommend. Um, taking a look and certainly bringing forth whatever questions you have um to the planning office. Um, I'm gonna move on to Mark Forgus.
I'm sorry, I keep forgetting to unmute you.
What happened?
Okay, Mark.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, I lost it for a minute. Hey, Mark Forgus, White Pond Road. Um, I've gone to some of the public meetings with this and. Um, this is one of the s- the development areas that I thought would be, uh, might be a decent area. The reason is that. There's some restrictions on the wells that allow like three, I believe it's three, uh, three pro- three houses per well. Uh, if you get ten different, ten different properties there, you know, you're allowed thirty houses rather than fifteen per, per unit. My, my question is, is that. If a developer were to buy, uh, let's say the little farm that's over there. And they could convince Maynard to tie into their uh well and uh well and septic systems. Uh, town water, town sewer. Can the town of Stowe stop that? Or is that something they could just do, uh? If the town of Maynard said gee, we'll do that? Cause that would then make it allowable fifteen units per, per acre, like, like the, like the bylaw states.
Right, so, um, so, yes, Mark is uh getting at the point that the, the water restriction is holding back. Um, some development there. We've, we have reached out to Maynard to, to ask them this question. Um, you know, whether, whether they would in the future provide water um to some of these homes, um, or these parcels. Um, they, the town, Maynard does currently provide uh utilities to, to some homes along the town line. Uh, within Stowe. Um, however, right now, Maynard does, simply does not have the water. Um, or the resources to allocate it to additional housing units, even homes within the town of Maynard itself. So they are, they're not for um providing additional water and in fact. Um, that would require a vote of their water board, which is made up of their select board. Um, so, so the select board in Maynard would need to vote to approve something like that. Uh, meanwhile, their residents are, are struggling with uh with their water capacity and supply.
So, so the odds are in a, in a, uh, people's favor that there won't be fifteen units per acre in that area because of the water restrictions. Um, and you're saying that Maynard says that they don't have enough water supply. So if someone couldn't come over, someone couldn't come over and say, gee, let me drill you a new well and give you more water supply. Uh, and then maybe vote it in, but that could probably be a long process. Couldn't, couldn't, my question is, is can this town of Stowe? Stop them from doing that? And who would have the authority to do that if they did? And it's just a question. I mean, I, I, I'm in favor of this area because I think it's, it'd get less, less chance of being developed with fifteen units per acre. Than any, anyplace else you, you know, we talked about when, in, in the public meetings, so. Anyway, just a, just a, just a thought.
Yeah, to be, to be honest, I don't, I don't know what the process of rejecting that would be. Uh, I, I think one thing is important to note too is. Thinking about what is allowed or what is possible with current water and cell and, um, and septic. Uh, regulations is, you know, the town is looking to construct um six units of housing. Um, at the former Cornelius property along Red Acre Road. Um, and so they're looking to do, the Affordable Housing Trust is looking at creating six units of housing on a nine acre parcel. So that's. That's with um private well and private septic. So you, you do get um smaller, or you get a lesser density. Uh, with, with private utilities.
You're right. Okay, very good, thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna go to, it says Jen, although it looks like it may not be Jen. Oh no, it is Jen, okay. One second while we unmute you.
Okay. I'm Jen, I'm at sixty Great Road, so directly across from um where this is being proposed. I was just wondering if any traffic feasibility studies have been done as somebody who routinely pulls out onto one seventeen? Do we have bandwidth for hundreds of more cars to pull out at the same time?
So the fact is, uh, with typical development, there's a special permit required. And the town can require the developer to do a traffic study, but. Um, with the state mandate of being this is development by right. Um, frankly, we chose Great Road because of that fact. Um, and while I understand concern anywhere in town for increased traffic. Um, that, you know, from a mathematically speaking, um, you know, a one percent. Increase in traffic on Great Road, um, versus um a fifty to a hundred percent increase on, on a local road. Um, is what we had to consider, given that the state um does not allow any requirements or special permit.
Alright. And it won't be hundred.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Ruth. One moment while we unmute you.
Unmute, okay. Is that, am I unmuted?
Yes.
I don't know how to make the camera work, I apologize.
No worries.
So Ruth LeBlanc, thirty-three Pomposittiget, I'm directly behind the proposed area on one seventeen. Uh, I'm kind of wondering that, why the westbound side of one seventeen was chosen above the eastbound side. In east Lower Village and why you didn't consider as a, as a board, as, as the whole. Not you personally, is the whole um board, did not consider um expanding. The district to the, include. The center of Lower Village and maybe a little to the west of Lower Village. Why did you limit it?
When you said center, do you mean the actual retail portion?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Um, Valerie, do you want to first speak to the retail portion?
Sure, yes. Um, so we did look at um whether or not the, the Lower Village proper. The business district itself could um, uh, could comply with this bylaw. Um, there are, there are a couple different factors within um the state law that do not allow. Um, the Lower Village area as, as it is to um, to comply. So we'd have to increase the density. Get rid of the, the bedroom limits. Um, and also let go of the special permit process for housing development within Lower Village. Um, so we've spent quite a bit of time um on a vision for Lower Village that includes a mixed use with residential and. Commercial businesses um at once. Um, we just went through, uh, we just finished a, a long uh. Uh, public process around that. Um, that really allowed the planning board to maintain some control over the look and feel of those um structures. Any structures that would be built in the Lower Village for that long-term future. So if we were to put our district there, we would no longer be able to have that special permit process. Um, in addition, um, we would not be able to use. That area for more than a quarter of the town's total requirements. So even if we were to put it over the Lower Village, modify that zoning. We still would need to find a second area uh for more, for more housing.
I think in addition, um, we would also need to allow, um. So right now, you can do. so right now you can do residential on the second floor of the retail district. Uh, but if we place this, um, in the retail district, uh, we would not be able to have that as a requirement. And so it would likely shrink the retail district. Um, and given that, um, you know, 5% or less of our tax base is made up from non-residential, uh, we did not, we also thought it was not wise to, um, shrink, uh, the retail district.
Yep, that's right. We have to allow standalone residential, um, within, within that district.
But just to reiterate one point Valerie said, which is again, in the state law, it actually limits, uh, what percentage of, uh, the commercial, um, space you can use for this law itself. Um, and so that was, um, one of the biggest factors as well.
Okay, I mean, I was kind of thinking of, there are a couple of little side roads off of the dead center there and then west of Lower Village, um, where there might be some possibilities of areas. I'm just wondering why those were not considered just over here where it's wetlands and a lot of aquatic life and, uh, just so much wildlife over here that will all be destroyed.
And I guess I want to share two thoughts on that and Valerie can add in, which is just a reminder that, um, you know, wetlands protection still remains. And so, um, that will still control a bit of what can happen near wetlands. Um, but the other, the other biggest factor I would say is, uh, most of the roads on the other side are, uh, small dead end cul-de-sac roads, um, which basically would mean increasing the density would increase, uh, traffic on those roads, uh, percentage wise significantly. Um, and because again, this is by right, um, and the town doesn't get its normal say in, um, traffic flow or traffic study or, um, anything else. I think those were some of the, um, biggest considerations. Um, and so Valerie, anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think, so we, we did take a look at some locations along Red Acre Road, um, and along Bradley Lane, uh, and Lanes End Road as well. Um, so I think we, we did, we really did focus early on, on our village centers. So, um, Town Center, Lower Village, uh, we looked at Gleeson Dale, we looked at, um, Hudson Road and Great Road. But yes, we, when we looked all around Lower Village, um, we were trying to figure out what would be compliant land. And there was a lot of that water resource protection area or, um, state excluded land. So, um, and at the same time, really looking for, um, uh, traffic, uh, concerns along dead end roads or along, um, small, uh, local roads.
And actually, if you take a look at them up, I think if I'm not mistaken, um, Meeting House and Elmeridge are both in the water protection zone.
Right.
Okay, thank, so, and my, and the other part of that question is, and I'm not advocating for this at all. I'm just asking why you didn't put this zone on the, um, eastbound side of 117 across from where you currently have the proposed area?
Uh, let's see. Sorry, I'm looking at the map to refresh my memory.
I think that if, if I'm recalling, there may have been a time that we were actually thinking about both north and south, on the westbound and eastbound. Um, but I'm, I don't know if we've ever brought that to a, a public forum.
All right, we can, we can certainly have, take note and, uh, and see. All right, uh, let's see, are there other resident questions or comments?
Laurie, all that's wetland across the street, like that's the marshland by the Malone Road there. I mean, there's, it's all water there.
Where all the houses are?
Um, it, it looks like there's, there's some parcels that have that, that wetland area, um, but there, there may, we'd have to look into a little bit more, um, to see, but there are some homes that, that are not within it. Um, but we could, we could look into it a little bit more.
All right. Other questions, uh, from people who haven't spoken yet? All right, I'm going to go back to some of the folks, oh, Linda. Um, you haven't spoken yet, let's get her first. Hi Linda.
Hi, thanks. Um, I just wanted to say to the planning board.
Sorry, can you state your name and address?
Linda Hathaway, 76 Crescent Street, obviously not within the district. And I understand the residents' concern about having it, um, this overlay district there. But it, I look at this is, I'm not happy that the state is requiring us to do something like this, but I think this particular zone gives us a, some flexibility in the, in the sense of anybody in the district, if they choose to do something with their property, they can. No one has to. And, um, and I don't think that in my, just thinking about how the development works and the well restrictions and the septic systems and the setbacks, that these, um, parcels will ever see the full maximum. And even if we can only get a few units, it's better than nothing. And so I, I, I really do appreciate the planning board's thoughtfulness and taking all this information in and, um, providing this, um, as an area, uh, for the development. It does make a lot of sense. And I do understand the residents in the districts, their concern. Um, but I really, I mean, they don't have to sell and they don't have to develop. And it will be slow and incremental and I truly believe that. I've lived in town a long time and I've seen the issues and, um, I, I don't want us to lose grants if this gets voted down. I don't want to have the town, um, you know, lose a lot of funding. And I, I really do appreciate the planning board's, um, work on this.
Thank you, Linda. All right, I'm going to go back to Brian M. Hausen.
Thanks, Brian M. Hausen, 9 Hastings Street. I'm in that area just on the other side of the street there. Um, so I just wanted to raise another question about what, what came up when I asked my first question, which is why not closer to the MBTA, right? If, if the idea is to create low income housing close to transit, not necessarily like close to our tiny little mall that doesn't really seem to be going anywhere. Um, what, and, and, and then we didn't get to, didn't really get an answer on why we didn't count the town homes that we already have over by the old Boz property. I, I meant to reuse those sort of already exist.
That we can.
Understand that.
That we can answer, Brian.
And I understand why you don't want to, like, the wealthy landowners down by the river don't want to look at the low income housing, um, there, but, and give those low income housing a nice view of the river. I understand that too. So, but it doesn't seem like this was really selected for anything other than development of the Lower Village, which doesn't really seem to be developing. It seems to be, and like going backwards. Thank you. That's all.
Valerie, can you comment on the housing near the old Boz property?
Um, yeah, so, so we, we cannot count existing homes toward it just simply because we have, um, other, other housing developments. Um, you know, we can't say that we've, um, provided our, our multifamily requirements.
What do you mean, we haven't met the multifamily zoning by having multifamily housing there?
No, um, unfortunately, so you.
Okay.
Okay.
It has to be new?
I don't know.
Okay.
This, it doesn't seem great.
I'm going to move to Brian Martenson. Hold on, Brian, we haven't unmuted you yet. Sorry.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes.
I, I have a, a comment, uh, and, and a question. There's been a lot of commentary and a, a whole lot of questions, so. You could place, uh, a 3A zone on top of an existing multifamily neighborhood. Many other towns have done that. We could have done that. I know that people there, living there wouldn't like it, just as people who live in the East Lower Village don't like it. But you could have done that. So that's my comment. My question is, I, as you know, I'm not happy with, with the direction that the planning board take and, and I've been very vocal about it. You did an analysis of where you looked at 20 or so sites. And when I read this analysis, it's like a, 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 a never-ending list of why it would be impossible to put a 3A zone there. And then I look at the one that you prepared for the East Lower Village and you don't have any negative impacts on the, at least East Lower Village. All you list is why this is the only place in town that you could put such a district. And if you read it, I think you will see that. Do you think that was a fair way to evaluate these sites? Do you, we, there's a lot of negative reasons why the East Lower Villa, Village shouldn't have been considered, but you didn't consider that. All you considered, if this is true, are all the reasons why it'd be a great place. Why did you decide that? Why didn't you not, not look at the, uh, uh, negative impacts? Certainly, our residents, village residents have been giving you all the negative impacts that they feel, but you didn't consider them. Why not?
So I, I don't mean for that document to be interpreted as not considering the negative. That document is intended to be our argument for.
Oh, why didn't you do a fair comparison among all the sites, including the East Lower Village?
Again, the alternatives document is trying to be transparent at the reasons why we didn't choose. Now, some of those are hard and strict in terms of, um, the state's excluded land and some of those are choices and criteria that we applied. So again, the alternatives document is meant to show you what our decision criteria was or why we excluded it. And the other document is meant to show you why we chose, uh, East Lower Village.
Yeah, clearly that's what it was. Do you think that's kind of a fair way to analyze individual properties and, um, look at the costs and benefits and pick the right one? You haven't done.
I think if you take a step back and look at the larger, greater criteria we applied in terms of not wanting to be a local road because of significant traffic impact from a percentage standpoint, not wanting it to be a large all at once, uh, development and really taking the input from citizens of town, um, not only in preferred location, but also in, um, what they wanted to protect. That's, those are the criteria that come across. That's what you see.
Okay. I, I, I'm, by the way, Brian, across the street, I, 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 I agree with you entirely. And my preferred site is the one on South Acton Road. It's perfectly developable. There's no reasons, it's not a landfill. Nobody is proposing to build on that landfill. There's plenty of acreage beside it. Um, the water resource protection zone, it's a bogus issue. You could very easily site a driveway over that. It wouldn't require a special permit necessarily. In fact, if you wrote it in here, it wouldn't require a special permit at all. So there's no legitimate reason why you can't consider that. Plus, it's within a walking distance, a half mile, of the train station. I think that's the best site for, for Stowe.
All right, well, thank you. Any other, uh, let's do, uh, Ruth? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, Jen, yeah, Ruth. And Jen, we'll get back to you.
Hi, thanks. This is Ruth. Um, so I know, um, I've come to understand that a lot of the reasoning for this area, East Lower Village is for, to create a vibrant Lower Village Business District and walkability, uh, and you cannot walk from the proposed site to, um, the business district at all. So I know, and it's been said before, that, uh, it may incentivize a developer to put in a sidewalk, but if you're leaving it up to say one homeowner who decides they want to sell or one homeowner who decides to build a second unit on their property or two units on their property, they're not going to put in a sidewalk. So it's not, it's not going to make it any wa, and there's no walkability with this plan.
So Valerie, do you have a comment about the state?
Yes, um, so the state has opened up a capital grant source for towns that are compliant with MBTA communities. And given that it's long been a priority of the town to construct a sidewalk from Lower Village, uh, to the Maynard Town Line, um, I feel that this would be a great grant application to the state so that the town could, um, work on its own behalf to get a sidewalk at that location.
All right, let's go to Maureen's iPad.
Sorry. Um, this may be a stupid question, I'm not sure.
If you can just state your name and address first?
Oh, sorry, Maureen Van Ness, 55 Pomposittit. Um, I know the state's goal is to create more housing because we know in Massachusetts, we're low on housing. Um, is there any way that the state could change its mind and take this property, these properties by eminent domain? Has anybody asked the town council or researched that at all? I don't know. Maybe, as I say, maybe that is a stupid question. I'm not sure, but I'm just curious.
That is, that is not the state's intent. No, they, they do not own any of this land. They are not looking to acquire land. Um, in, in fact, the, the state is looking at, um, at some properties that they own across the state for housing, but it is not this type of land. It's the DCAM owned land.
Right, I know, but I know that, well, as far as the construction of the, the bridge in, um, the Sagamore Bridge, that people that are living near the bridge, their properties are being taken by eminent domain. I, I know that's a roadway or a bridge and it's different, but I just wanted to make sure that there's no way the state could change its mind and decide, well, we need this housing and too bad.
The state has not indicated at all that they are looking to become, um, housing developers in this way. No.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go to Ginny. Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, actually this is Dorothy Granite, 11 White Pond Road. And, um, I guess this is a comment. Um, I, at this point, uh, would you like the thought?
Dorothy, you're breaking up a little bit, um, and we can't hear you.
The area being where it is walkability to that. Just a moment. Can you hear me now? Is this better?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um. I feel that, um, the comment about the area closer to the train station is pretty valid. I also wanted to comment as someone who's near there, but not a budding to the proposed place. The, um, comments regarding they don't have to develop, I don't think so many of the people worried about themselves developing. The um comments regarding they don't have to develop, I don't think so many of the people worried about themselves developing. It's what's gonna happen, right, beside them. Also, the other comment is where it's proposed that you want this so we can help develop a walkable area, like in our Lower Village. That was said a lot when the new zoning for the uh Lower Village Business District was. And the road that I was, that I live on was touted as the pedestrian walkway because it connects track road, the Asavet Wildlife and the bike path to the town. But after that was passed and the permit was given for a property owner that uh developed without, uh, without following his original permit. And it's turned White Pond Road into a non-friendly spot for the pedestrians. So it just leaves me feeling do we believe like this is great for pedestrians because it didn't show that that's where the follow-through was with the last two for pedestrian downtown? That's my comment.
Thank you, Dorothy. Okay, we are well past the hour. Um, so I'm gonna see if we can take any last comments and then we'll see if the board wants to close the hearing or not. Um, so Ruth?
Um, Ruth, Ruth de Blaine, thirty-three Pompositicket Street. Um, I don't have any other comments except that I would really like to um revisit this again uh and find some more open space that can be developed where we won't be destroying a lot of uh wildlife and woods. Thank you for hosting this.
Thank you, Ruth. Okay, um, so gonna open up to the planning board to see, um, Nancy?
Um, just in response to some of the comments, I'm just curious. Valerie, because you followed the whole process, if a new site was to be introduced, and I know the process going through the state is, is quite complicated for approval before a town meeting, would it even fall within the timeframe of what is left before the deadline?
Thank you for, for asking that, so I have a moment to clarify. Um, appreciate it. So um if the planning board opted to go with a different location, um, we would, uh, we would not be able to present at October town meeting. Um, I, you know, it took the board, this is, I think, month thirteen since we really started this process in depth. Um, so it took us thirteen months to get here. I can't say how long it may take us to potentially fi- find a secondary location. Um, but we have until the end of this year to comply with the state's law, so we have three months left, uh, four months left. Um.
And that includes the pre-submissions that we have to give them on the way to getting things approved by them, right?
Right, yes, we've been working with the, the state's Office of um Livable Communities, um, the AG's Office, Town Council, multiple different consulting firms um on, on this effort, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to check.
Other planning board member comments or questions?
I did, I did actually want to just bring up one other um item regarding the citing of housing and near that landfill. Um, we did receive uh written comments from the state that landfills are not appropriate sites for three A districts. So I did ask them specifically about that site off of South Acton Road. Um, so given, given that the state commented that, um, I am unclear, uh, you know, it seems that they would reject that location in the future.
Mac?
Um, can you just clarify? There was one speaker who um seemed to indicate that it was his impression that all this housing was gonna be affordable. Can you just clarify that and make that really clear, uh, what the actual is gonna happen there?
Yes, thank you. So this is um, this is uh in- intended as any other housing development, so um, there's only ten percent um of housing, if, if homes were to be developed, only ten percent would be required to be deed-restricted affordable. So that's typical to any other subdivision. Um, so this is not intended as um the low, low-income housing. Uh, so it's, it's only ten percent that would be deed-restricted.
And again, that wouldn't kick in unless they were building at least how many units?
At least ten units.
Right, so if they were sticking to less than ten units, uh, there would actually not be affordable units. Meaning, just so everybody um is clear, that would be the state-defined deed, deed-restricted affordable units. Okay. Um, any other comments or questions from the board? All right, um, Brian, I know you have your hand up. Uh, so the question, is there something new you wanted to share? Before we close. One second, we haven't unmuted you.
Yeah, I'd like to seek some clarification on something. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So Valerie, um regarding the South Acton Road site, um you frequently raised this issue of the landfill and that uh the state wouldn't allow something on a former landfill. We haven't even been talking about acreage that is on top of the landfill. We've been talking about or suggesting, and you guys have suggested it as well at one time, that acreage which isn't part of the landfill. So, uh, are you deliberately trying to confuse things for people? Because it seems that way.
Uh, no, again, I think if people look at the Alternatives document, we do outline overall the entire parcel, why we did not choose that parcel, and there are multiple reasons. So again, the reason why we created the Alternatives document is so that would be transparent the reasons why we did not choose various parcels. So, again.
There's, there's still, much of the land along South Acton Road is state-defined excluded, so when folks have referred to the South Acton Road land at the, at the um town line, that, that is the land that we have been looking at, which is on page fourteen of that document. So I, I am not intending to confuse the matter. I'm, I am fully feeling as though I'm addressing the concern.
And again, that land included both the, what was the former dump, as well as the land adjacent to the former dump, which has no frontage on South Acton Road. Without going over the Water Resource Protection area. And again, there are multiple reasons. Everybody can go and look at the Alternatives document and see the reasons we said. And again, I, we never said a lot of the properties on the Alternatives, it was not possible. What we, and none of them were submitted by the state, so we can't say for sure. But what we did say is that we've, we've looked at them and discussed them and put our reasons forward of why we did not put those pieces of property forward. Again, um, that, there's a link to the Alternatives document as well as a link to the reasons why we, we did choose what we did choose.
Yeah, I understand that. Um, and I've read all those documents. But um, the planning board, respectively, you've known that this was a con- controversial selection from at least since March of this year. And you had plenty of time uh to maybe provide an alternative or to give people a choice at town meeting. Would you like this area or this area? But you decided not to do that. And I'm wondering why you didn't allow or didn't pursue two potential options to give the town a choice. Because I think most people, if you were to ask them, would you like to have a three A development on top of your residential neighborhood? I think most people would say, hell no. And there is no residences on some of these sites. And if, if I, I, I don't know why you didn't do that. Can you explain why you didn't?
Again, I think our presentation actually touches upon some of the areas, one being we are choosing incremental development over a large development, as well as protecting open space, which multiple uh, you know, the, through resident engagement and multiple town plans and boards and committees uh have basically said and given input that they uh would prefer to keep those open. Um, so.
But you never engaged.
Okay, I, I'm not going to sit here and debate you, except to say that we can acknowledge that no matter where we put this, there will be upset property owners and abutters. And I don't think we have um tried to hide that fact. That we understand that there are upset abutters and property owners, and we expect that, no matter where this goes. Even if it is on open space, by the way, there will be a lot of abutters to that open space. So I just wanted to say that. With that, I guess I would ask the board if um we're ready to close the hearing.
Actually, Laura, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Brian's comment. And I, I'd say that, I mean, we did look at lots of alternatives. And we did present those alternatives to a information meeting where we got input from at least the people that were there, what their priorities were. And also, we, the board has talked about the possibility of presenting two locations at town meeting. And we thought that was very risky. Because how do you manage that? Uh, and know whether or not hopefully at least one of them would pass. And at town meeting, that would be very risky. And I think that was why, certainly I thought that wasn't a good strategy to try to put two zones uh up as proposal at town meeting.
Yeah, I agree with John. I, I can't imagine coming to, to, going to town meeting with two proposals, because one neighborhood is gonna be pointing to the other neighborhood, and you'll get nowhere.
Exactly.
Thanks. Um, with that, I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
All right, any other discussion before we close the hearing?
I just make, uh, ask, is there other opportunities for us to get public input? And if there are, we should just tell people about that. Are there, are there, or, or are there not?
Um, we will be doing additional outreach, um, but because we need to have the, we need to uh finalize the bylaw and the location, um, there, this really is the last um opportunity for input that would shape the bylaw or location.
And of course, I mean, people could always join our planning board meetings, which are open to anybody who wants to come. And I'm sure this will be, continue to be discussed at some of them.
It will continue to be discussed.
Yes.
Um, just one thing I wanna add before we close is that um, I think Valerie's slide, um, I know we went over it quickly. But um this process has been going on for a long time, and I can tell you that we we have done more engagement on this process than probably any other zoning change we have. Um, again, it's been going on for a year. The people in the district were notified, I believe, in March. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and so we've been, and, and we've actually held um individual sessions and, and invited uh property owners and abutters to those sessions as well. So besides the in, uh, initial public process, um, which again was more expensive than any other zoning change we've had, we've also had specific sessions with the abutters. Um, so just putting that out there for everyone to know. Um, we have had a motion, we have had a second. Any other comments from the planning board about closing the hearing? All right, if not, I will take a roll call vote on closing the hearing. Nancy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
An aye. All right, thank you, everyone, for attending.